All right, call me in order, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is an open meeting of the Seward Nebraska governing body, the city of Seward abide for the Nebraska Open Meeting Act and Conducting Business. A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is displayed on the north wall of this meeting room facility as required. Disclosure of meeting recording processes is posted in the meeting room. Any citizen may address the council regarding items included on the meeting agenda and are asked to complete and hand in a speaker card to clerk. Presenter shall approach the podium, state the name and address for the clerk's record, and are asked to limit remarks to five minutes. All remarks shall be directed to the mayor, who shall determine by him any appropriate response shall be made. The city of Seward deserves the right to adjust the order of items on this agenda if necessary, and may elect to take action on any of the items listed. Please call the roll. Kayler.
Here.
Streisand.
Here.
Singleton.
Here.
Worgen.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Francis Gatto.
Here.
We have a quorum present. All right, thank you. Uh, the first five items this evening make up the consent agenda.
I'll move the consent agenda.
Motion and a second, any further discussion?
I got a recommendation on that one. Um, the original claims run included a claim from Seward and Lipte. Because they all came in at the exact same time, we had an excessively high claims run. And so our cash in hand in the bank, because we have a lot of CDs and stuff with our two local banks, uh, that was a almost $700,000 claim. It's not due till after the next council, so we pulled it so we didn't have to go pull out CDs and ruin those interest rates on those and pay the penalties on it. So we recommend approving the claims without the claim to Seward and Lipte, and then we'll bring that at the next one. But it's our full year worth of insurance claims and everything, and it hits right at the beginning of the fiscal year. And when we saw it today, when it came through to process claims, we were like, yeah, let's not do that one. So we don't have, we don't have to ruin all those CDs by having to pull them out ahead of time.
So we're still going motion and a second?
Yeah, we're good with that.
Okay. Any further discussion? Sign up, please register your votes. Do display the votes.
Voting in favor Francis Gatto, Kayler, Miller, Singleton, Streisand, Worgen, six zero.
All right, thank you. Under administrative items, item number one, consideration of a contract with the Nebraska Public Power District for wholesale power purchase. Greg.
This is the contract that we had the presentation on, uh, I believe two meetings ago. Uh, we also met, uh, in closed session, discussing contract negotiations in regards to this contract. Uh, we do have Carson here again from NPPD, uh, our customer rep for like technically till today. So we get handed off today, but our, our new rep will show up and we'll, we'll have a meeting, uh, with her. Jared and I did attend the, uh, wholesale, uh, customer meeting last week in Carney. Uh, we got to meet with some of our compatriots at some of the rurals as well as the municipalities. Um, and speaking of Carson tonight, I think we are the last municipality that will have signed, if we sign tonight. Um, all the other ones, and again, we worked with them together to kind of do a review of this over the last two years. Um, but we anticipate that all the municipal wholesale customers are going to sign the contract. As a 35-year contract reminder, the predominant reason to have a contract is so that the contract extends for the life of the debt service for the new generation, uh, that NPPD has to build with all of the increased factors that were presented to you about a month ago. And so we kind of talked about all of that. I did have a chance to meet with, um, Bruce, uh, over at Norris and confirmed with them, they are recommending on the 24th, their board's going to meet, uh, for a recommendation of approval. And so I got to have some sit down talks with Bruce and just make sure. I think it's important that as Norris goes, we do as well because we share and utilize a lot of the same transmission systems coming in from NPPD. So to be on the same page with them, uh, that we're not going in different directions, uh, is, is beneficial as well. So I can answer any questions. Again, I think we had an extensive amount of discussion over the last two years, working with NPPD, hiring our municipal consultant to take a look at the contract and the different parameters of it, uh, and the opportunities that are ahead if we do sign it. And so from the administration at least, our recommendation would be a recommendation for approval. And again, Carson's here, I'm here, and Jared's here to answer any questions.
Where are you going, Carson?
Well, I took a different position at NPPD, so.
And I say sign, so you wanted to sign a 35-year contract and you just walked out the door?
Never.
Gone.
Gone.
That's smart. That's smart. That's smart.
I took a different position at NPPD, so.
So you can still yell, yeah?
Absolutely.
It's just a different.
Every day.
It's just, it's just a different office?
Yeah.
Perfect. Sounds good. Any questions or comments from the council? Otherwise entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second. Have a motion and a second for approval, any further discussion? Sign up, please register your votes. Do display the votes.
Voting in favor Francis Gatto, Kayler, Miller, Singleton, Streisand, Worgen, six zero.
Thank you and congratulations.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Item two, discussion with Seward Public Schools for potential long-term lease of the Legion baseball field. Greg.
Yeah, um, kind of throughout our discussions and as part of what initially was the turf project, but has now kind of extended into some of the planning that's going on, uh, with Seward Public Schools. Uh, we've kind of always had this discussion back and forth about the utilization of at least the Legion field. Um, as most of you know, the predominant user of the Legion field for the last almost 10 years that I've been here has been the high school, Concordia baseball, high school baseball, Concordia baseball, and Legion baseball. Those are our three predominant users. Legion baseball used to be run entirely by the city, and we identified that we were the only municipal Legion team in the entire state. And so over the last number of years, we've worked with the local Legion to revert that back so that parents and, and the Legion themselves are the ones that are involved in that because they're the ones that tend to be the most excited as their kids are of the appropriate age, along with utilization of the Legion name and, and the, the way that they kind of regulate that. And so by transferring that off, other discussion we always had was, it's interesting that we always did Legion baseball, but we didn't have a, a flip side maybe for softball. And so it just kind of made sense to kind of transition that away as a municipal use and have it be undertaken entirely by the Legion and their, uh, nonprofit organization. So through those discussions, now the city is maintaining and overseeing a facility that we have nothing going on on. None of our programming is happening, and so essentially we're maintaining it for other people's uses. And throughout, obviously, the years I've been here, also mediating, uh, the back and forth of, of utilization of it. And so that led to discussions that perpetuated some of the work that we did in trying to look at some master planning, and then ultimately getting to where we are now, where we're looking to build two fields within the city. I think one by Concordia, one by potentially the school district, or utilization of a field by the school district that would create two, um, turf fields that could be multipurpose for both baseball and softball. Correct me if I'm wrong, I'm looking for head nods as I say this. They're willing to like have to jump up and yell at me. And so with that, in some of the planning and the strategic planning between both the turf committee, and now if you've gone to any of the public, uh, outreach items that Seward Public Schools is doing in regards to the discussion of a bond issue for next spring, they've included, um, the Legion field upgrades within that bond. And so we felt like with the amount of, uh, upgrades that were specifically going to be done at the Legion field by the public schools should the bond go through, along with all the work that the turf committee has done, uh, which is predominantly led by high school parents and our high school coaches that are involved in that, is that we would entertain letting them, since they're the ones putting all the capital improvement into it and significant upgrades, entertaining the idea of would they be interested in a long-term lease of the facility so that they can control their own destiny, they can regulate it amongst themselves, and they can work with Concordia in regards to their scheduling, and they don't have a third party in there shaking things around. And so that was the initial discussion. Uh, we asked, and, and Dr. Fields is here, we asked that that discussion then start with the school board, and I think they had that, and so Dr. Fields can fill in on that one. And then we said, based on whatever that feedback was, we would bring it to you, and then we'd have a recommendation tonight of where we potentially could go based on your feedback. Dr. Fields?
Yeah, thank you. Greg Richard did a great job explaining that, but we also have Paul Dorr and then a few of our coaches here with Brock and, um, Mr. Card. Really, the discussion became around as we're looking at potential projects at the school is what, what would be some dollars that we could put in towards the, the field? And so after the pivot a little bit, when Concordia wanted to do something on their own campus, uh, we looked at then using the Legion field, the current Legion field is both our softball and also baseball turf. And so that was some of the big discussion originally, but we'd be able to have a portable mound, be able to use, um, in our season for our high school, softball's in the fall, and then obviously our Legion is, or not Legion, but our high school is in the spring, and then Legion in the summertime. So if I could be a great opportunity, our board was overall very supportive of a long-term lease. If the city council wanted to move that direction or was interested in that direction. And one of the things we felt could be also helpful as we're working for these projects, it is nice if you're making a capital, um, improvements on those, that the district would be part of that lease, um, piece. And so that was kind of the thought process behind that and the reasons why we, Greg and I have had many conversations over the last, it was like a long time, but probably over the last year or so, talking about those possibilities if it would come up. So the board would really appreciate your thoughts around, the longer the lease, the better in their opinion. And so, you know, Greg and I could have those discussions, but we prefer a longer, long-term lease for us to be a better solution in our minds.
The other item I would note that we've talked about, and it was involved both with Concordia and, uh, in the discussion with Seward Public Schools, was what would the focus of the city be and where would that line? And I think in speaking, I'll let Mayor Eichmeyer speak for himself, but really we wanted to focus on facilities outside of the, the field itself and look at concession stands, bathrooms, access, ADA accessibility. We still think that there's a possibility that we could, um, utilize one facility down there for both the two-plex and the Legion field and build a better facility that has all the expected amenities, along with an ADA accessible bathroom that doesn't, you know, isn't dark and kind of hard to light, and kids like to sneak into and stuff like that. And so we think that's more of a thing that the city can tackle, and again, maybe also look at utilization for some youth facilities to cater to that, which we always define that we think at the city that we're more of the recreational youth development level where we start, and then we hand them off at the middle school and the high school level to Seward Public Schools. And so if we can look at more focuses for like the very young youth and youth development, like we do with the cattle building and things like that, that could be a better focus for us. The other thing is, is an amenity like that with bathrooms, concession stands and things, is we can also do that dual use where we talk about our parks need restrooms, our trailheads need restrooms. And so by having a facility that's kind of multipurpose for our uses, that works out better for city function rather than putting substantial amount of city funds into a field that the city's doing nothing on. We have no programming, we have, you know, we're just kind of maintaining it based on what people tell us they're doing. And so, uh, we felt like that approach would be better for, for city planning and funds. But again, ultimately, the decision comes down to you guys and where we focus over the next couple of years.
One thing I should also mention is the maintenance piece, and that was something we talked to our maintenance department about, and they think that would be, they could handle that, was our school maintenance piece of making sure that the field is updated and upkeep is done after games and all those pieces. Also, our two coaches do a great job of having the players themselves making sure that the maintenance of that field, um, as they're currently using now is up to date. And so that's something we feel like could also be, we could handle as a district, so.
One other one that we talked about as well is that should the bond go through as potentially proposed, one of the other options is also that a potential turf field would be installed at the high school football field, correct?
Correct.
And that would take specific equipment and maintenance, that if also we have a turf baseball field, it makes more sense that they would have all the equipment to do all the maintenance and everything, rather than splitting that or trying to coordinate amongst us to try and finagle, hey, we need to get this for softball, or we need to get this for football, and bringing it back and forth. If their maintenance crew is the one that's versed on how to maintain it, operate the equipment, and they're able to do that at both facilities because they lease it and/or own it with the high school football field, that just makes it a, a lot more easier for maintenance purposes too, rather than having two full different staffs try to figure that out and finagle back and forth between us, or us buying our own maintenance equipment. So that was another consideration that we brought up that might, might ease that maintenance use.
Yeah, John?
Who's going to be responsible for utilities? Is that part of the lease, or is that something the schools have?
That would be discussed in the lease terms. Likely it would be this turned over to the school.
At the end of the day, we're just trying to, you know, we, we have all these amenities. We have parks in particular in this instance that, um, we just want to make sure that as a city we are providing an amenity that's appropriate for, for what we're trying to accomplish. In this case, whether it's ADA accessible bathrooms or concessions or our park equipment or wherever that may be, we felt like that's something the city needs to still retain, just like we would with other parks. That responsibility should still be on us. Um, but it, it also makes sense that if the school district is going to, to, if they're going to lease the, the field for in this instance, that, uh, we would rather than be responsible for the maintenance so that they can maintain it at the level and the quality that they want and expect and not fall on us to try to meet, um, expectations as far as. And, and they've been great partners in the past, but between, you know, Concordia and the school district, uh, utilizing the field and we're, we're just, we're more responsible primarily for the maintenance, although the coaches and the teams do a lot of maintenance themselves on, for game day in particular. Um, sometimes we felt like we got caught in the middle of, of what, what their expectations were versus what we could reasonably, um, provide. And so by us taking a step back, we're not, we're not selling the property, just to be clear, but we're taking a step back as far as who's responsible for maintenance and for the programming on those particular fields. And, um, and we even talked like, Dr. Fields said, this has been a conversation going on for a long time as we try to see how all the pieces fit together between what, what's best for Concordia, what's best for the school district, and what's best for the city of Seward. And so that's why we wanted to bring this proposal to you tonight as sort of a culmination of all those efforts.
And the last question?
Yeah.
There'll be a li- liability agreement that they accept the liability in?
There'd be a mutual indemnificat- our.
Talk to our state attorney's big grin on his face.
He's clicking his pen.
Yeah, there'll be plenty of, and again, that's not just to protect us, that's to protect them and the, and the public, everyone involved. There'd be, uh, the, this will be a lot longer of an agreement than we've had in the past for the field. So I think it's, I think it started off with a handshake back in the day between Concordia and every, and the school district. So no, this would be a traditional lease agreement, every, all those concerns for liability, who's responsible for this, that, including utilities would all be covered and spelled out in the agreement. And that's just also so all the parties know what to expect. And hopefully, not that it can cover every possible scenario, but enough of the usual scenarios that may come up so people know how, you know, how, what to expect moving forward, and if they're responsible or we're responsible, or what it may be. And again, we're not going anywhere in the city of Seward, they're not going anywhere as the school district. So this, it makes sense that over time, regardless of the length of the, of the lease, there will be opportunities to renegotiate if necessary, if all of a sudden it doesn't make sense, or somebody says, oh, the baptist feels, you know, $10 million to build, you know, a baseball field somewhere else. I'm sure he'd want to consider that, right? Probably. I can't speak for him, but, so there are always those other, other scenarios that can come, that can happen. So I don't let the length of the lease, uh, you know, concern anyone because that's very common between, um, uh, government entities. For the fact, because, you know, we're, we're not worried about either one of us going bankrupt and going out of business like you might with a private contract.
I'd also just add, I think the partnership we've had with the city has been great. You know, your youth are also using our football complex, continue that use, um, for their Sunday league, and then also the overflow of volleyball and for basketball, we still are using some of our facilities for some of those pieces. And so we just appreciated the agreements that we've had with the city here for long-lasting, so.
Yeah, I, I'd echo that too. A lot of what we do is, is this back and forth kind of trade of facilities. Uh, and it's, it's nothing to specifically pick on with Concordia, but within regards to the city use, our programming and our uses for the Concordia's facilities are limited to none. And then obviously, the school district has some interactions back and forth with them in regards to different athletic events and stuff like that. But we've had a great relationship and, and, and worked out well to try and accommodate whether it's city, I mean, the city, the big basketball tournament now is operated by the Wellness Center, the one that was originally, um, put on by Shane Bach and his group. Uh, and so we're, we're undertaking that now, and we'll work with the school district to utilize facilities as well as when they need to come over and utilize the Wellness Center because for some reason they need to get indoors, and they need another space for volleyball practice or basketball practice. We try to be accommodating to each other in that way, and I, I don't see that relationship changing anytime soon.
Both Greg and I know, but just so I know, one of the questions I've gotten from, that, that have been in contact with Dr. Bol, so he is aware of the discussions that, um, we've had as a school board. So I just want to make sure that you're clear on that, and, and so they're working hard to try to build their own field on their campus, and that's, and that we would continue to work with Concordia, um, at least for this coming year to see what that looks like and what is needed, and so it does need support.
I'd say the last one is our recommendation tonight, because we did put this on for discussion. There's no specific action item at this time before you, is that we would recommend to take this back, if you're okay with the general idea of pursuing this further, to the Parks and Rec Committee to give them their due deference, as the Parks and Rec Committee that kind of oversees those facilities, have a recommendation from them, or at least get their feedback, and then bring in November potentially a first draft of a lease for consideration by both the school board and the city council.
Dr. Fields, does that work for your?
Yeah, that's kind of what, had the same conversation with the board, and would say we would be looking at, you mean, hopefully possibly approving a draft lease or something here in November. And our board being, we only meet once a month, and so we meet a second Monday of each month, and so it'll be November 10.
Well, on something like this is obviously, I think it makes a lot of sense, but it's a departure from our current relationship when it comes to the ball field is, we, we do try to slow play some of these discussions because we, we don't want you as a council to feel like we're, we're jamming something through. We also don't want the public to feel that they haven't had opportunities to speak on it. So even if they miss this, um, tonight, there'd be opportunity, obviously, when the, when the draft itself comes before the council, and they'd have opportunities at the school board, I assume, to also weigh in on that. And so we, we intentionally, uh, slow play these types of big discussions for those reasons. Any questions or comments from the council? Otherwise, we will take that as indication that we will move forward at this time and bring back a, a draft for you in the near future. Then from the public wish to comment on this item?
Sign no one, then we will go ahead and close item number two, and we will move on to item number three. Consideration of approval of a work order number three with M.E. Collins Contracting Company for the Worthman Boulevard Extension Project. Greg.
Yes, let me make sure, I have a little memo, because Mike is not here. Mike and Brandon, um, are in Minnesota looking at a, um, facility that does pretreatment similar to what the dairy system is going to be. There we go, I'll utilize that one. Um, so this is work order number three on the Worthman Boulevard Extension Project, uh, in amount of $23,000. Predominantly, this one is in relation to the extension of Storm Sewer along Pine. As you know, Pine comes down in front of Pet Source, crosses over, and is just to the east of Kellen Meyer's facility. And then it kind of stubs out right now. When they originally planned it and they went in there, uh, it was just a, an interconnection with the current Storm Sewer system. When they actually broke into the concrete to go make that interconnection, they found out that the original facilities that were installed there were all encased in 10 cubic yards of concrete. And so there is no way to get into that to make those connections unless you want to make a really big mess and have a bigger change order. And so they made a readjustment to their, uh, plans for that. And so, uh, 17,143 dollars are due to additional quantities based on bid unit prices, and then an additional $6,395 of the total of $23,000, uh, raised for four items, not including the original bid. And so that would make those adjustments, and that's what totals out on the project. Predominantly, the other one that they've noted in there is some of the Storm Sewer that was designed or put in at that time that they're interconnecting into also was built, um, utilizing plastic structures. That, that we usually typically limit to supplemental Storm Sewer areas and not, uh, you know, without vehicular traffic. An example that Mike used in his memo is some of the drainage that we have behind, uh, the North Cemetery. Uh, the, the far end over by the houses where we know we're not going to be crossing over the roadways, but we have some drainage in there. Those facilities were built out of, uh, plastic Storm Sewer systems. Um, and so, but predominantly ones that are going to have traffic over the top of them, we would utilize, um, a concrete structure. And so that's another recommendation change, finding what we found in there. So I can answer any further questions, but again, uh, that's what totals out the, uh, the total on that one.
Any questions or comments for Greg? entertain a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion. And a second for approval? Any further discussion? Sign up, please register your votes. Do display the votes.
Voting in favor Francis Gatto, Kayler, Miller, Singleton, Streisand, Worgen, six zero.
All right, item four, consideration of a pipeline agreement with BNSF for the Worthman Boulevard Water Main Extension Project in the amount of $3,900.
Um, yeah, this one's a pretty simplistic one. Uh, as we've known since even prior to my arrival, most of our utilities that make any sort of extension through the Burlington Northern Railway, whether it's the, um, main line that's near Tendico and Pet Source or, uh, the junction line that goes up to David City by Hughes Brothers, anytime you cross that now, you need to have an easement, even if it's located within the right-of-way. They want a distinct easement that defines what is underneath there or overhead, uh, of the railroad. Uh, as part of the Worthman, as part of the Worthman Boulevard Extension Project for our water main, that we took down Worthman and then we took up the west end of the rail campus, that crosses underneath, the third phase crosses underneath the Burlington Northern Railroad track uh, through a boring process, and then makes the final connection to our main line, uh, that also interconnects in with the water treatment facility. And so that third phase requires an easement underneath there. Originally, they had done a lot of these easements as annual ones, but this one has a flat fee and then it's a term lease for, so. I think the terms are good on this one, I was thoroughly surprised by it, but, uh, this is the new way that they're doing leasing, and most of their leasing is done by third-party contractors, if you know the name of the drafters and things like that. But this will be for the Water Main Extension Project, and I believe it's a 25-year lease, so. And we're not putting some other weird pipeline, they call it a pipeline lease, but it's a water main. So it is a pipe, it's going underneath, it is being bored in, but it's not like a gas or oil pipeline, it's a water main. I can answer any questions you have.
Any questions or comments for Greg? Does entertain a motion? So move.
Second.
On a motion and a second for approval? Any further discussion? Sign up, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Voting in favor Francis Gatto, Kayler, Miller, Singleton, Streisand, Worgen, six zero.
All right, item five, consideration of a resolution approving a street closure crossing Highway 15 for Seward County Chamber Development Partnership Christmas Festival Annual Lighted Christmas Parade on November 29th, 2025. Derek.
It's a very descriptive title of what's going on. So the annual Christmas parade will be on November 29th, that's the celebration day here in town. Um, we just get the approval from council, board it on to the state to make sure, since it crosses over state highways, similar to what we do for the Fourth of July. I'll submit that to them, assuming it's okay, which it will be, don't see any reason why they would say no. Um, we'll have that documentation that we're good to do our parade like we've done in the past years. So the route's the same, and seemingly everything else is the same as in previous years. That's it.
Thanks, Derek. Any questions or comments from the council? Otherwise, it has someone to introduce the resolution.
I'll introduce the resolution.
All right, the resolution has been introduced, and this does say it has resolution number 2025 dash.
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five?
Thirty-five.
All right, 2025 dash 35. We would like to move that this resolution be passed and adopted.
Second.
A motion and a second, any further discussion? Sign no, please register your votes. Do display the votes.
Voting in favor Francis Gatto, Kayler, Miller, Singleton, Streisand, Worgen, six zero.
All right, thank you. Item six, consideration of amendment with the Southeast Nebraska Development District, SEND for General Administration and Construction Management of CBDG number 21, DTR 011. Greg.
Yeah, this is an extension on a closeout. Uh, all of these projects are completed, we're just doing the closeout paperwork and everything with SEND for our last round of DTRs that we completed. Um the other slowdown on this one is is our send contact, Kelly Gentrup is leaving send. And so we're getting handed over to a a new uh general contact on our CBG agreements. So uh working through that, but this is just an extension so that when we get our completion certificate, it's extended to the completion of cer- certificate for both of them. So pretty simplistic, just paperwork to get finished out and close that out. We've already received, I think, a lot of our funds and stuff is just project closeout.
Questions or comments from the council? You maintain a motion?
Move to approve.
I have a motion and a second for approval. Any further discussion? Seeing no, please register your votes. Please sway the votes.
Voting in favor of Francis Gao, Kayla Miller, Milton Strice and Morgan, six zero.
All right, item seven, consideration of approval of audit engagement letter with AMGL to conduct the city's annual audit, Greg.
Yep, this is just our standard letter. Um I think we have one more year after this with AMGL. Uh and then we will finish up on our current agreement with them and then we'll go out and solicit for whether we wanna have a different audit firm come in and take a look at our stuff. But every year, we sign an agreement letter with them before they come in and do the audit. I think we're scheduled for November sixth and seventh for our audit visit. And we're already prepping now to get all documentation, everything ready uh there at City Hall. So I can answer any questions you have.
Any questions or comments from the council?
Move to approve.
I have a motion and a second for approval. Any further discussion? Seeing no, please register your votes. Please sway the votes.
Voting in favor of Francis Gao, Kayla Miller, Milton Strice and Morgan, six zero.
Next we have the city manager's report.
Yeah, um I think the big ones right now are probably rail campus with the extension of Worthen Boulevard going on. We're gonna have some paving start in that area. We're trying to coordinate scheduling and planning for the intersection of Pine and Worthman as they'll dig in and start the work on that to re-change all of the turn radius. Cause have you seen in there, if you've ever driven through, you can see how all the trucks like to jump over the curbs. So we're gonna redo those, as part of the planned project, we're redoing the radii in there. But we really wanna plan out how we flow traffic through there and what we do with Pet Source, Lavander, WRC. Um and so uh trying to get all those things coordinated, that's a big one, especially for Mike to work on uh with our partners over there Dairy and then our contractors that are on site working in Worthman. Um another one that was big is we just completed our six-month evaluation period. And so Derek and myself, I completed all the evaluations of the department heads. And then Derek and myself went through all the evaluations and read through all of them in critical eye. Make, you know, comparisons to prior years and things like that and then made recommendations back. And we'll be meeting with the department heads to kind of review those with them, reset expectations and just understand if we saw something that went one way or the other. You know, we wanna know why people are doing better and if people are sliding back behind, what we can we do to help, how can we assist, what resources can we provide? So that's, but that takes up a lot of time and uh kudos to Derek for all his work that he does and uh coordinating those back and forth, making sure everything's signed, math maths. And and that all the forms are filled out correctly and then he provides that in a nice package for me. And then I sit down and give another critical eye and we have a nice conversation about that. Uh Mike, myself and Brandon also uh went up to Norfolk and met with them. And just if you paid attention to the news, they've had uh historic uh dairy processors that have been there for years and years and years, decades. That have come and gone and industrial loading. And so we went up there and got to see their facility and sit down with their wastewater management team, their city uh engineer that oversees that section and their lab team that does all the testing and stuff. Cause part of the big part is when we bring on dairy, we'll have to undertake regular testing with them because of the nature and the amount of flow that they'll have. Um and so we wanted to kind of work through what do's and don'ts do you have, what things did you learn from all these years, what things are you moving to? And so we gleaned a lot of information, they were a great resource uh for us to try and just understand better. I think we went away from it, uh especially with the written stuff that we did with the MOU that you guys approved. A lot of the things that are in there uh really sets the city up well to be ahead of the curve versus chasing this thing from behind in regards to understanding what we're undertaking. Uh but they were pretty impressed that the things that we already required, the pre-treatment that we're gonna require, uh the manhole or the metering manhole that we're investing in and building out uh so that we can test on a regular basis and kind of hit all those things that we wanna see. Um and so that was a good one. Like I said, those guys are out in Minnesota today going and seeing the pre-treatment facility itself. Uh that's gonna be operational here, they're seeing one that's in use already uh in Minnesota. So just doing all that pre-stuff to make sure that anything that we can glean and just make it easier for both Dairy and ourselves here at the city uh and the wastewater treatment team that that they can do that. And so um we're finishing up that stuff. Um trying to look through anything else. That's kind of it. So those are probably the big ones. And then obviously, me and Jared handing out to Carney to handle the uh wholesale contract and discussions there. Um I would say the other big one that we gleaned and we're just getting in on this one, we talked about a department head, is there is a very big and quick discussion and push on AI within the utility structure, within the municipal structure. Um that technology is moving faster than almost anybody can keep up with it. And so obviously, we're having discussions with the league about how you install things and and NPPD was a great example of putting together some parameters and stuff. Cause right now, there's really nothing regulating municipal use of it and we wanna be very careful that um we do have something in place that if employees are utilizing it in any way, that they're not putting in sensitive data, they're not risking our systems and servers and all that. So we just wanna kind of start implementing some things to get ahead of the curve on that now, uh rather than play from behind as that technology and the use of it within the utility stratosphere or any municipal stratosphere moves forward. And so we got some things sent to us and all the other wholesale customers from NPPD and we're gonna dive into that. Potentially look at setting up a committee of uh different people throughout the city uh employed. So how we can best protect ourselves, but also utilize it if it's a a functional tool that we can uh create efficiencies or or better the services that we provide to citizens. So that's another thing that we have floating around in there in the midst of all this. If there's anything else I can answer questions on, let me know.
Where are we at with the change in the grass process that the DUC is acting on?
We're we're working on getting a po- policy ready. We just finished up the stuff with the recycling center and tried to balance that out. We're also meeting with Rumory on Friday. So we're continuing, we just wanna make sure everybody that's in play and a part of that is upfront about what the discussion is. But our intent is still by the first of the year, as was noted, to have something in place that's that you guys have adopted.
And then Rumory will be.
Whatever you guys do, but we're just trying to make sure that based on, uh our biggest one for the meeting on Friday is just a discussion of uh development, annexation and other things that are going on down there, just so we know what the planning is too, so that we can kind of coordinate all this together. Uh and not make big changes and then find out that things are actually different in the short order, when we should have pivoted a whole different direction.
Any other questions for Greg on his report?
No, no approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second to accept your report. Please register your votes. Please sway the votes.
Voting in favor of Francis Gao, Kayla Miller, Milton Strice and Morgan, six zero.
All right, do you have a future request for council items or measure of action?
Can I make a future request?
Uh no, you'd have to go through your council person and then they're the ones that would bring forward the item. Um with uh we have a policy of, is it four council members?
Yep.
So you, so we would recommend you start with your council member and then they can um, you would need four council members.
I have to be on the agenda, I can't just follow up. And I didn't ask it and it sort of relates to Dr. Fields.
Not at this time, um cause yeah, and we, the I, the way we do ours is we allow comments on any of the items as the item comes up. We'd otherwise, we'd be always going back and going back and going back, we would be here for three hours. So, but with that, um you, is Jonathan, Jonathan, upcoming events?
I'm not hiding.
You are hiding, but the pink shirt, the salmon shirt?
Salmon.
Salmon shirt gave you one?
Yes. Thanks for that. Uh so upcoming events here, uh we have Tuesday, October twenty-eighth, so next Tuesday, um our annual partnership with Concordia, um through their Concordia Catalyst Competition, um business plan pitch. Have semifinals and then Tues- two weeks from that, Tuesday, November eleventh, is the Concordia Catalyst Competition Finals. We'll encourage um consideration for young student entrepreneurs. Um Friday, November seventh, we'll be hosting a public meeting um through our Revitalize and Thrive program. Seward was one of five communities in the state selected for that, we have an intern working with us to intentionally engage young professionals and asking young professionals what they want in our community now, but also in the future. I wanna say thanks to council members, uh Kayla and Francis Gao for being a part of our um Revitalize and Thrive Action Team. So we'll ask the public to help us identify, one of the things we'll be talking about is identifying a potential new uh public space where we can build out to connect not just with young professionals, but the entire community moving forward. So that'll be coming up on Friday, November seventh, we'll um share more details about that here soon and we're gonna have that late afternoon. We have our uh monthly ribbon cuttings, ground breakings, on Wednesday, the nineteenth, we have five of them. Um so starting one o'clock, uh with our friends in Milford, Dragonfly Coffee Shop is opening up at SDC's campus. Um Sammy's Diner is a new uh restaurant in Milford. And then we have uh individual membership with Joe Mellencamp, um Seward Jiu-Jitsu is a new member of the chamber. And then we have a groundbreaking with the Dairy, uh which is the uh facility that's being built, um you know, where the former Dairy was on uh on US Highway thirty-four. So we're excited to celebrate um with the Seward family and uh that investment in our community. We have coffee and conto- uh coffee and condos with our Seward County Young Professionals at Bagels and Joe on Thursday, uh November twentieth in the morning. Of course, we have our fifteenth annual Seward Christmas Festival on Saturday, November twenty-ninth. Thanks for uh your support through the resolution action earlier this evening for our parade. And lastly, a good news to share, uh we were one of five communities selected through the Nebraska Investment Finance Authority uh for their first uh Communities for Housing Program. Uh it was a competitive process, um but that will give us some funds to update our housing study, which we need to redo about every five years. So good news to share and um it'll, it's also not just funds, but also peer learning program where we'll um work with other communities that are part of that for uh the coming three years. So with that, that's all I have. Thanks, Mayor.
Thanks, Jonathan. And with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Motion and a second, please register your votes. Please sway the votes.
Voting in favor of Francis Gao, Kayla Miller, Milton Strice and Morgan, six zero.